Do you want to take some new break? Do they push this ass? God, it's much better than that.
You know, these times I have...
Why, maybe this is new.
Oh, I think it's...
Some of the people so love projects.
Is that so hard to do? Yeah, it was really... But it's not, it's not supposed to be one and all.
I love that.
Yeah, we need, we need to do with someone, we need to get to practice with someone. That I think is, whatever.
Well, you know, they have a new group version now which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really like, you know, I was like, oh, she's in this car. And it's going, it's like, that's right, French. You know, it's a love. And Lauren, you're... It's like, oh, it's... That's not... That's not... I mean, she worked at the... I mean, this thing, you know, I'm worried. Um, I'm so... I'm so... And... 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 Or that. I need that one. I need that one again. And I said, hello, I think so. Beautiful, I think twenty dollars.
And...
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know, or...
Oh, we have the, so, right, we're on the great, great big heart.
Oh, yeah, small coffee.
Okay, in one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And then another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. They could take... We had, like, the white... Maybe so, we...
It is strong.
Take, like, that's one of them.
And then you have that, um, have...
And like that. I came watching this show. Yeah. But, um...
I mean, you're right, people, they're taking my piece from where they will.
Okay, now, look, dog.
Do you want to take some new break? Do they push this ass? God, it's much better than that.
You know, these times I have...
Why, maybe this is new.
I think it's...
Some of the people so love projects.
Is that so hard to do? Yeah, it was really... But it's not, it's not supposed to be one and all.
I love that.
Yeah, we need, we need to do with someone, we need to get to practice with someone. That I think is, whatever.
Well, you know, they have a new group version now which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really like, you know, I was like, oh, she's in this car. And it's going, it's like, that's right, French. You know, it's a love. And Lauren, you're... It's like, oh, it's... That's not... That's not... I mean, she worked at the... I mean, this thing, you know, I'm worried. Um, I'm so... I'm so... And... 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 Or that. I need that one. I need that one again. And I said, hello, I think so. Beautiful, I think twenty dollars. So, how do you...
And...
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know, or...
Oh, we have the, so, right, we're on the great, great big heart.
Oh, yeah, small coffee.
Okay, in one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And then another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. They could take... We had, like, the white... Maybe so, we...
It is strong.
Take, like, that's one of them.
And then you have that, um, have...
And like that. I came watching this show. Yeah. Yeah. But, um...
I mean, you're right, people, they're taking my piece from where they will. Okay, now, look, dog. Do you want to take some new break? Do they push this ass? God, it's much better than that.
You know, these times I have...
Why, maybe this is new.
I think it's... Some of the people so love projects. Is that so hard to do? Yeah, it was really... But it's not, it's not supposed to be one and all.
I love that.
Yeah, we need, we need to do with someone, we need to get to practice with someone. That I think is, whatever.
Well, you know, they have a new group version now which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really like, you know, I was like, oh, she's in this car. And it's going, it's like, that's right, French. You know, it's a love. And Lauren, you're... It's like, oh, it's... That's not... That's not... I mean, she worked at the... I mean, this thing, you know, I'm worried. Um, I'm so... I'm so... And... 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 Or that. I need that one. I need that one again. And I said, hello, I think so. Beautiful, I think twenty dollars. So, how do you...
And...
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know, or...
Oh, we have the, so, right, we're on the great, great big heart.
Oh, yeah, small coffee.
Okay, in one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And then another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. They could take... We had, like, the white... Maybe so, we...
It is strong.
Take, like, that's one of them.
And then you have that, um, have...
And like that. I came watching this show. Yeah. But, um...
I mean, you're right, people, they're taking my piece from where they will. Okay, now, look, dog. Do you want to take some new break? Do they push this ass? God, it's much better than that.
You know, these times I have...
Why, maybe this is new.
I think it's... Some of the people so love projects. Is that so hard to do? Yeah, it was really... But it's not, it's not supposed to be one and all.
I love that.
Yeah, we need, we need to do with someone, we need to get to practice with someone. That I think is, whatever.
Well, you know, they have a new group version now which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really like, you know, I was like, oh, she's in this car. And it's going, it's like, that's right, French. You know, it's a love. And Lauren, you're... It's like, oh, it's... That's not... I mean, she worked at the... I mean, this thing, you know, I'm worried. Um, I'm so... I'm so... And... 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 Or that. I need that one. I need that one again. And I said, hello, I think so. Beautiful, I think twenty dollars. So, how do you...
And...
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know, or...
Oh, we have the, so, right, we're on the great, great big heart.
Oh, yeah, small coffee.
Okay, in one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And then another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. They could take... We had, like, the white... Maybe so, we...
It is strong.
Take, like, that's one of them.
And then you have that, um, have...
And like that. I came watching this show. Yeah. But, um...
I mean, you're right, people, they're taking my piece from where they will. Okay, now, look, dog. Do you want to take some new break? Do they push this ass? God, it's much better than that.
You know, these times I have...
Why, maybe this is new.
I think it's... Some of the people so love projects. Is that so hard to do? Yeah, it was really... But it's not, it's not supposed to be one and all.
I love that.
Yeah, we need, we need to do with someone, we need to get to practice with someone. That I think is, whatever.
Well, you know, they have a new group version now which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really like, you know, I was like, oh, she's in this car. And it's going, it's like, that's right, French. You know, it's a love. And Lauren, you're... It's like, oh, it's... That's not... I mean, she worked at the... I mean, this thing, you know, I'm worried. Um, I'm so... I'm so... And... 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 Or that. I need that one. I need that one again. And I said, hello, I think so. Beautiful, I think twenty dollars. So, how do you...
And...
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know, or...
Oh, we have the, so, right, we're on the great, great big heart.
Oh, yeah, small coffee.
Okay, in one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And then another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. They could take... We had, like, the white... Maybe so, we...
It is strong.
Take, like, that's one of them.
And then you have that, um, have...
And like that. I came watching this show. Yeah. But, um...
I mean, you're right, people, they're taking my piece from where they will. Okay, now, look, dog. Do you want to take some new break? Do they push this ass? God, it's much better than that.
You know, these times I have...
Why, maybe this is new.
I think it's... Some of the people so love projects. Is that so hard to do? Yeah, it was really... But it's not, it's not supposed to be one and all.
I love that.
Yeah, we need, we need to do with someone, we need to get to practice with someone. That I think is, whatever.
Well, you know, they have a new group version now which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really like, you know, I was like, oh, she's in this car. And it's going, it's like, that's right, French. You know, it's a love. And Lauren, you're... It's like, oh, it's... That's not... I mean, she worked at the... I mean, this thing, you know, I'm worried. Um, I'm so... And... 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 Or that. I need that one. I need that one again. And I said, hello, I think so. Beautiful, I think twenty dollars. So, how do you...
And...
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know, or...
Oh, we have the, so, right, we're on the great, great big heart.
Oh, yeah, small coffee.
Okay, in one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And then another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. They could take... We had, like, the white... Maybe so, we...
It is strong.
Take, like, that's one of them.
And then you have that, um, have...
And like that. I came watching this show. Yeah. But, um...
I mean, you're right, people, they're taking my piece from where they will. Okay, now, look, dog. Do they push this ass? God, it's much better than that.
You know, these times I have...
Why, maybe this is new.
I think it's... Some of the people so love projects. Is that so hard to do? Yeah, it was really... But it's not, it's not supposed to be one and all.
I love that.
Yeah, we need, we need to do with someone, we need to get to practice with someone. That I think is, whatever.
Well, you know, they have a new group version now which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really like, you know, I was like, oh, she's in this car. And it's going, it's like, that's right, French. You know, it's a love. And Lauren, you're... It's like, oh, it's... That's not... I mean, she worked at the... I mean, this thing, you know, I'm worried. Um, I'm so... And... And... Or that. I need that one. I need that one again. And I said, hello, I think so. Beautiful, I think twenty dollars. So, how do you...
And...
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know, or...
Oh, we have the, so, right, we're on the great, great big heart.
Oh, yeah, small coffee.
Okay, in one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And then another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. They could take... We had, like, the white... Maybe so, we...
It is strong.
Take, like, that's one of them.
And then you have that, um, have...
And like that. I came watching this show. Yeah.
I mean, you're right, people, they're taking my piece from where they will. Okay, now, look, dog. Do they push this ass? God, it's much better than that.
You know, these times I have...
Why, maybe this is new.
I think it's... Some of the people so love projects. Is that so hard to do? Yeah, it was really... But it's not, it's not supposed to be one and all.
I love that.
Yeah, we need, we need to do with someone, we need to get to practice with someone. That I think is, whatever.
Well, you know, they have a new group version now which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really like, you know, I was like, oh, she's in this car. And it's going, it's like, that's right, French. You know, it's a love. And Lauren, you're... It's like, oh, it's... That's not... I mean, she worked at the... I mean, this thing, you know, I'm worried. Um, I'm so... And... 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 Or that. I need that one. I need that one again. And I said, hello, I think so. Beautiful, I think twenty dollars. So, how do you...
And...
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know, or...
Oh, we have the, so, right, we're on the great, great big heart.
Oh, yeah, small coffee.
Okay, in one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And then another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. They could take... We had, like, the white... Maybe so, we...
It is strong.
Take, like, that's one of them.
And then you have that, um, have...
And like that. I came watching this show. Yeah. But, um...
I mean, you're right, people, they're taking my piece from where they will. Okay, now, look, dog. Do they push this ass? God, it's much better than that.
You know, these times I have...
Why, maybe this is new.
I think it's... Some of the people so love projects. Is that so hard to do? Yeah, it was really... But it's not, it's not supposed to be one and all.
I love that.
Yeah, we need, we need to do with someone, we need to get to practice with someone. That I think is, whatever.
Well, you know, they have a new group version now which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really like, you know, I was like, oh, she's in this car. And it's going, it's like, that's right, French. You know, it's a love. And Lauren, you're... It's like, oh, it's... That's not... I mean, she worked at the... I mean, this thing, you know, I'm worried. Um, I'm so... And... 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 Or that. I need that one. I need that one again. And I said, hello, I think so. Beautiful, I think twenty dollars. So, how do you...
And...
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know, or...
Oh, we have the, so, right, we're on the great, great big heart.
Oh, yeah, small coffee.
Okay, in one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And then another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. They could take... We had, like, the white... Maybe so, we...
It is strong.
Take, like, that's one of them.
And then you have that, um, have...
And like that. I came watching this show. Yeah. But, um...
I mean, you're right, people, they're taking my piece from where they will. Okay, now, look, dog. Do they push this ass? God, it's much better than that.
You know, these times I have...
Why, maybe this is new.
I think it's... Some of the people so love projects. Is that so hard to do? Yeah, it was really... But it's not, it's not supposed to be one and all.
I love that.
Yeah, we need, we need to do with someone, we need to get to practice with someone. That I think is, whatever.
Well, you know, they have a new group version now which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really like, you know, I was like, oh, she's in this car. And it's going, it's like, that's right, French. You know, it's a love. And Lauren, you're... It's like, oh, it's... That's not... I mean, she worked at the... I mean, this thing, you know, I'm worried. Um, I'm so... And... 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 Or that.
And... 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 And...
I don't know if you can read. You can push this ass, huh?
Yeah. It's times like that.
Why, maybe this is new. Is that so hard to do?
Yeah, but it's not, it's, it's not supposed to be wonderful. Yeah, but if you, if you had to do anything with some, we need to get to practice with some. Put any of that.
Well, you know, it's, uh, they have a new group version now, which, uh, is linked up to the internet.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting at a bench. I really, I think, you know, I was a natural major scar. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it's a love. Um... And I said, hello, beautiful.
Uh, and... Uh, I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in the middle of the dough or...
Um, we have the, so, like, what's on the gray, gray baguette?
Oh yeah, it's like a small coffee.
Okay, in one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. In another bag, two plates on it.
That's the study what they can study to take... The white beans or...
In this one, okay. And then you have that, um, you have...
And like...
Okay, now it's like that.
I don't know if you can read. You can push this ass, huh?
Yeah. It's times like that.
Is that so hard to do?
Yeah, but it's not, it's, it's not supposed to be wonderful. Yeah, but if you, if you had to do anything with some, we need to get to practice with some. Put any of that.
Well, you know, it's, uh, they have a new group version now, which, uh, is linked up to the internet.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting at a bench. I really, I think, you know, I was a natural major scar. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it's a love. Um... And I said, hello, beautiful.
Uh, and... Uh, I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in the middle of the dough or...
Um, we have the, so, like, what's on the gray, gray baguette?
Oh yeah, it's like a small coffee.
Okay, in one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. In another bag, two plates on it.
That's the study what they can study to take... The white beans or...
In this one, okay. And then you have that, um, you have...
And like...
Okay, now it's like that.
I don't know if you can read. You can push this ass, huh?
Yeah. It's times like that.
Is that so hard to do?
Yeah, but it's not, it's, it's not supposed to be wonderful. Yeah, but if you, if you had to do anything with some, we need to get to practice with some. Put any of that.
Well, you know, it's, uh, they have a new group version now, which, uh, is linked up to the internet.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting at a bench. I really, I think, you know, I was a natural major scar. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it's a love. Um...
Uh, and... Uh, I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in the middle of the dough or...
Um, we have the, so, like, what's on the gray, gray baguette?
Oh yeah, it's like a small coffee.
Okay, in one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. In another bag, two plates on it.
That's the study what they can study to take... The white beans or...
In this one, okay. And then you have that, um, you have...
And like...
Okay, now it's like that.
You can push this ass, huh?
Yeah. It's times like that. It's times like that.
Is that so hard to do?
Yeah, but it's not, it's, it's not supposed to be wonderful. Yeah, but if you, if you had to do anything with some, we need to get to practice with some. Put any of that.
Well, you know, it's, uh, they have a new group version now, which, uh, is linked up to the internet.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting at a bench. I really, I think, you know, I was a natural major scar. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it's a love. Um...
Uh, and... Uh, I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in the middle of the dough or...
Um, we have the, so, like, what's on the gray, gray baguette?
Oh yeah, it's like a small coffee.
Okay, in one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. In another bag, two plates on it.
That's the study what they can study to take... The white beans or...
In this one, okay. And then you have that, um, you have...
And like...
Okay, now it's like that.
I don't know if you can read. You can push this ass, huh?
Yeah. It's times like that.
Is that so hard to do?
Yeah, but it's not, it's, it's not supposed to be wonderful. Yeah, but if you, if you had to do anything with some, we need to get to practice with some. Put any of that.
Well, you know, it's, uh, they have a new group version now, which, uh, is linked up to the internet.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting at a bench. I really, I think, you know, I was a natural major scar. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it's a love.
Uh, and... Uh, I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in the middle of the dough or...
Um, we have the, so, like, what's on the gray, gray baguette?
Oh yeah, it's like a small coffee.
Okay, in one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. In another bag, two plates on it.
That's the study what they can study to take... The white beans or...
In this one, okay. And then you have that, um, you have...
And like...
Okay, now it's like that.
I don't know if you can read. You can push this ass, huh?
Yeah.
Why, maybe this is new. Is that so hard to do?
Yeah, but it's not, it's, it's not supposed to be wonderful. Yeah, but if you, if you had to do anything with some, we need to get to practice with some.
Well, you know, it's, uh, they have a new group version now, which, uh, is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting at a bench. I really, I think, you know, I was a natural major scar. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it's a love. And I said, hello, beautiful.
Uh, and... Uh, I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in the middle of the dough or...
Um, we have the, so, like, what's on the gray, gray baguette?
Oh yeah, it's like a small coffee.
Okay, in one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. In another bag, two plates on it.
That's the study what they can study to take... The white beans or...
In this one, okay. And then you have that, um, you have...
And like...
Okay, now it's like that.
You can push this ass, huh?
Yeah. It's times like that. Yeah, but it's not, it's, it's not supposed to be wonderful. Yeah, but if you, if you had to do anything with some, we need to get to practice with some.
Well, you know, it's, uh, they have a new group version now, which, uh, is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting at a bench. I really, I think, you know, I was a natural major scar. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it's a love. Um...
Uh, and... Uh, I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in the middle of the dough or...
Um, we have the, so, like, what's on the gray, gray baguette?
Oh yeah, it's like a small coffee.
Okay, in one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. In another bag, two plates on it.
That's the study what they can study to take... The white beans or...
In this one, okay. And then you have that, um, you have...
And like...
I don't know if you can read. You can push this ass, huh?
Yeah. It's times like that. Yeah, but it's not, it's, it's not supposed to be wonderful. Yeah, but if you, if you had to do anything with some, we need to get to practice with some.
Well, you know, it's, uh, they have a new group version now, which, uh, is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so good, I'm so good, I'm sitting at a bench. I really, I think, you know, I was a natural major scar. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it's a love. Um... um or that I need that one I need that one I need that one that was good and I said hello it's beautiful twenty dollars
and I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes some of them are sweet as a milk or
oh we have the so great one on the green
yeah it's small carpet
give me one bag a multi-grain and a plate another bag
that's what they can study potato white babies in this room take like that's wonderful and then you have have and like that I need that one I need that one I need that one
okay now let's look at do they like to do break do they push the dash? no it's much better
sometimes I have maybe this is new so is that so hard to do? yeah but it's not it's not supposed to be one in a yeah we need we need to do with someone we need to get to put in there
well you know it's they have a new version now which is linked up to the internet we do talk to other people
because I'm sitting here my woman you know so I'm sitting on a bench I really want to go I was on the way to his car and it's going that's right yeah I was in love and I'm going to go it doesn't matter she worked it how can you spend your money um or that I need that one I need that one I need that one that was good and I said hello it's beautiful twenty dollars
and I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes some of them are sweet as a milk or
oh we have the so great one on the green
yeah it's small carpet
give me one bag a multi-grain and a plate another bag
that's what they can study potato white babies in this room take like that's wonderful and then you have have and like that I need that one I need that one I need that one I need that one
do they push the dash? no it's much better
you know sometimes I have maybe this is new so is that so hard to do? yeah but it's not it's not supposed to be one in a yeah we need we need to do with someone we need to get to put in there
well you know it's they have a new version now which is linked up to the internet we do talk to other people
because I'm sitting here my woman you know so I'm sitting on a bench I really want to go I was on the way to his car and it's going that's right yeah I was in love and I'm going to go it doesn't matter she worked it how can you spend your money um or that I need that one I need that one
Are you all getting some new break? Do they push the dash? No, it's much better than that.
You know, these times like that...
Why, maybe this is new.
Oh, that's good. So much for people so loved...
Right, thanks.
Is that something I can do? Yeah, but it's not... It's not supposed to be wonderful.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do... We need to do with someone. We need to get to practice with someone. But I think it's... Put in there.
Well, you know, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so busy. I'm sitting on a bench. I really want to go. I was at the National Museum of Car. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it was a club. And it's like... That's not... She worked it. I think this is... Um, I'm so... Or that. I need more water. I need that again. And I said, "Hello." "It's beautiful."
And...
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know? Or in some of them...
We have the... The white one on the gray baguette.
Yeah, small coffee.
In one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And in another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. To take... Like, no, like, the white... These are... Take like... That's one.
And then you have, um... Have... And like that. Okay, now...
Look, dog. Are you all getting some new break? Do they push the dash? No, it's much better than that.
You know, these times like that...
Why, maybe this is new.
So much for people so loved...
Right, thanks.
Is that something I can do? Yeah, but it's not... It's not supposed to be wonderful.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do... We need to do with someone. We need to get to practice with someone. But I think it's... Put in there.
Well, you know, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so busy. I'm sitting on a bench. I really want to go. I was at the National Museum of Car. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it was a club. And it's like... It's like... She worked it. I think this is... Um, I'm so... Or that. I need more water. I need that again. And I said, "Hello." "It's beautiful." "It's so...
And..."
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know? Or in some of them...
We have the... The white one on the gray baguette.
Yeah, small coffee.
In one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And in another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. To take... Like, no, like, the white... These are... Take like...
That's one. And then you have, um... Have... And like that. Okay, now...
Look, dog. Are you all getting some new break? Do they push the dash? No, it's much better than that.
You know, these times like that...
Why, maybe this is new.
So much for people so loved...
Right, thanks.
Is that something I can do? Yeah, but it's not... It's not supposed to be wonderful.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do... We need to do with someone. We need to get to practice with someone. But I think it's... Put in there.
Well, you know, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so busy. I'm sitting on a bench. I really want to go. I was at the National Museum of Car. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it was a club. And it's like... It's like... She worked it. I think this is... Um, I'm so... I'm so... I'm so... Or that. I need more water. I need that again. And I said, "Hello." "It's beautiful." "It's so...
And..."
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know? Or in some of them...
We have the... The white one on the gray baguette.
Yeah, small coffee.
In one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And in another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. To take... Like, no, like, the white... These are... Take like...
That's one. And then you have, um... Have... And like that. Okay, now...
Look, dog. Are you all getting some new break? Do they push the dash? No, it's much better than that.
You know, these times like that...
Why, maybe this is new.
So much for people so loved...
Right, thanks.
Is that something I can do? Yeah, but it's not... It's not supposed to be wonderful.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do... We need to do with someone. We need to get to practice with someone. But I think it's... Put in there.
Well, you know, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so busy. I'm sitting on a bench. I really want to go. I was at the National Museum of Car. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it was a club. And it's like... It's like... She worked it. I think this is... Um, I'm so... I'm so... I'm so... Or that. I need more water. I need that again. And I said, "Hello." "It's beautiful." "It's so... Help me."
And...
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know? Or in some of them...
We have the... The white one on the gray baguette.
Yeah, small coffee.
In one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And in another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. To take... Like, no, like, the white... These are... Take like...
That's one. And then you have, um... Have... And like that.
Are you all getting some new break? Okay, now... Look, dog. Are you all getting some new break? Do they push the dash? No, it's much better than that.
You know, these times like that...
Why, maybe this is new.
So much for people so loved...
Right, thanks.
Is that something I can do? Yeah, but it's not... It's not supposed to be wonderful.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do... We need to do with someone. We need to get to practice with someone. But I think it's... Put in there.
Well, you know, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so busy. I'm sitting on a bench. I really want to go. I was at the National Museum of Car. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it was a club. And it's like... It's like... She worked it. I think this is... Um, I'm so... I'm so... I'm so... Or that. I need more water. I need that again. And I said, "Hello." "It's beautiful." "It's so... Help me."
And...
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know? Or in some of them...
We have the... The white one on the gray baguette.
Yeah, small coffee.
In one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And in another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. To take... Like, no, like, the white... These are... Take like...
That's one. And then you have, um... Have... And like that.
Are you all getting some new break? Okay, now... Look, dog. Are you all getting some new break? Do they push the dash? No, it's much better than that.
You know, these times like that...
Why, maybe this is new.
So much for people so loved...
Right, thanks.
Is that something I can do? Yeah, but it's not... It's not supposed to be wonderful.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do... We need to do with someone. We need to get to practice with someone. But I think it's... Put in there.
Well, you know, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so busy. I'm sitting on a bench. I really want to go. I was at the National Museum of Car. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it was a club. And it's like... It's like... She worked it. I think this is... Um, I'm so... I'm so... I'm so... Or that. I need more water. I need that again. And I said, "Hello." "It's beautiful." "It's so...
And..."
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know? Or in some of them...
We have the... The white one on the gray baguette.
Yeah, small coffee.
In one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And in another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. To take... Like, no, like, the white... These are... Take like...
That's one. And then you have, um... Have... And like that.
Are you all getting some new break? Okay, now... Look, dog. Are you all getting some new break? No, it's much better than that.
You know, these times like that... Why, maybe this is new. So much for people so loved...
Right, thanks.
Is that something I can do? Yeah, but it's not... It's not supposed to be wonderful.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do... We need to do with someone. We need to get to practice with someone. But I think it's... Put in there.
Well, you know, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so busy. I'm sitting on a bench. I really want to go. I was at the National Museum of Car. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it was a club. And it's like... It's like... She worked it. I think this is... Um, I'm so... I'm so... Or that. I need more water. I need that again. And I said, "Hello." "It's beautiful." "It's so...
And..."
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know? Or in some of them...
We have the... The white one on the gray baguette.
Yeah, small coffee.
In one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And in another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. To take... Like, no, like, the white... These are... Take like...
That's one. And then you have, um... Have... And like that.
Okay, now... Look, dog. Are you all getting some new break? No, it's much better than that.
You know, these times like that...
Why, maybe this is new.
So much for people so loved...
Right, thanks.
Is that something I can do? Yeah, but it's not... It's not supposed to be wonderful.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do... We need to do with someone. We need to get to practice with someone. But I think it's... Put in there.
Well, you know, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so busy. I'm sitting on a bench. I really want to go. I was at the National Museum of Car. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it was a club. And it's like... It's like... She worked it. I think this is... Um, I'm so... I'm so... Or that. I need more water. I need that again. And I said, "Hello." "It's beautiful." "It's so...
And..."
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know? Or in some of them...
We have the... The white one on the gray baguette.
Yeah, small coffee.
In one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And in another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. To take... Like, no, like, the white... These are... Take like...
That's one. And then you have, um... Have... And like that.
Okay, now... Look, dog. Are you all getting some new break? No, it's much better than that.
You know, these times like that...
Why, maybe this is new.
So much for people so loved...
Right, thanks.
Is that something I can do? Yeah, but it's not... It's not supposed to be wonderful.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do... We need to do with someone. We need to get to practice with someone. But I think it's... Put in there.
Well, you know, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so busy. I'm sitting on a bench. I really want to go. I was at the National Museum of Car. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it was a club. And it's like... It's like... She worked it. I think this is... Um, I'm so... I'm so... Or that. I need more water. I need that again. And I said, "Hello." "It's beautiful." "It's so...
And..."
What's your last name?
I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in those, you know? Or in some of them...
We have the... The white one on the gray baguette.
Yeah, small coffee.
In one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and half a plate on it. And in another bag, two plates on it.
That's just what they can study. To take... Like, no, like, the white... These are... Take like...
That's one. And then you have, um... Have... And like that.
Are you all getting some new break? Okay, now... Look, dog. Are you all getting some new break? No, it's much better than that.
You know, these times like that...
Why, maybe this is new.
So much for people so loved...
Right, thanks.
Is that something I can do? Yeah, but it's not... It's not supposed to be wonderful.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do... We need to do with someone. We need to get to practice with someone. But I think it's... Put in there.
Well, you know, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, because I'm so busy. I'm sitting on a bench. I really want to go. I was at the National Museum of Car. And it's going through something. That's right, French. You know, it was a club. And it's like... It's like... She worked it. I think this is... Um, I'm so... I'm so... Or that.
And... 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 And...
Do they push this ass? No.
You know?
Why, maybe this is new.
That's not my idea. Yeah, but it's not, it's not supposed to be one of those.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do, they need to put some, we need to get to the right place with some. But I think it's... Whatever.
Well, you know, it's, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really, I think, you know, I was at the national major's car. And it's going, that's right, French. You know, it was a love. And Lauren thought you were going. So good. And... Hello?
And... I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in the middle, don't they?
Oh, we have the white one on the gray baguette.
Yeah, small carpet.
In one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and an apple plate. And in another bag, two plate ones.
That's what they can study. They could take... The white can use...
In this one.
Take like this.
And then in another bag, um... Have...
And like that.
Okay, now it's like that.
Do they push this ass? No.
You know? It's times like that.
Why, maybe this is new.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not supposed to be one of those.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do, they need to put some, we need to get to the right place with some. But I think it's... Whatever.
Well, you know, it's, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really, I think, you know, I was at the national major's car. And it's going, that's right, French. You know, it was a love. And Lauren thought you were going. So good. And... Hello?
And... I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in the middle, don't they?
Oh, we have the white one on the gray baguette.
Yeah, small carpet.
In one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and an apple plate. And in another bag, two plate ones.
That's what they can study. They could take... The white can use...
In this one.
Take like this.
And then in another bag, um... Have...
And like that.
Okay, now it's like that. Do they push this ass?
No.
You know? It's times like that.
Why, maybe this is new.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not supposed to be one of those.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do, they need to put some, we need to get to the right place with some. But I think it's... Whatever.
Well, you know, it's, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really, I think, you know, I was at the national major's car. And it's going, that's right, French. You know, it was a love. And Lauren thought you were going. So good. And...
And... I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in the middle, don't they?
Oh, we have the white one on the gray baguette.
Yeah, small carpet.
In one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and an apple plate. And in another bag, two plate ones.
That's what they can study. They could take... The white can use...
In this one.
And then in another bag, um... Have...
And like that.
Okay, now it's like that. Do they push this ass?
No.
You know? It's times like that.
Why, maybe this is new.
It's not, it's not supposed to be one of those.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do, they need to put some, we need to get to the right place with some. But I think it's... Whatever.
Well, you know, it's, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really, I think, you know, I was at the national major's car. And it's going, that's right, French. You know, it was a love. And Lauren thought you were going. So good. And... And...
And... I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in the middle, don't they?
Oh, we have the white one on the gray baguette.
Yeah, small carpet.
In one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and an apple plate. And in another bag, two plate ones.
That's what they can study. They could take... The white can use...
In this one.
Take like this.
And then in another bag, um... Have...
And like that.
Okay, now it's like that. Do they push this ass?
No.
You know? It's times like that.
Why, maybe this is new.
But it's not, it's not supposed to be one of those.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do, they need to put some, we need to get to the right place with some. But I think it's... Whatever.
Well, you know, it's, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really, I think, you know, I was at the national major's car. And it's going, that's right, French. You know, it was a love. And Lauren thought you were going. So good. And...
And... I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in the middle, don't they?
Oh, we have the white one on the gray baguette.
Yeah, small carpet.
In one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and an apple plate. And in another bag, two plate ones.
That's what they can study. They could take... The white can use...
In this one.
Take like this.
And then in another bag, um... Have...
And like that.
Okay, now it's like that. Do they push this ass?
No.
You know? It's times like that.
Why, maybe this is new.
Supposed to be one of those.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do, they need to put some, we need to get to the right place with some. But I think it's... Whatever.
Well, you know, it's, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really, I think, you know, I was at the national major's car. And it's going, that's right, French. You know, it was a love. And Lauren thought you were going. So good. And...
And... I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in the middle, don't they?
Oh, we have the white one on the gray baguette.
Yeah, small carpet.
In one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and an apple plate. And in another bag, two plate ones.
That's what they can study. They could take... The white can use...
In this one.
Take like this.
And then in another bag, um... Have...
And like that.
Okay, now it's like that. Do they push this ass?
No.
You know? It's times like that.
Why, maybe this is new.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not supposed to be one of those.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do, they need to put some, we need to get to the right place with some. But I think it's... Whatever.
Well, you know, it's, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting here, my woman, you know, so good, I'm sitting on a bench. I really, I think, you know, I was at the national major's car. And it's going, that's right, French. You know, it was a love. And Lauren thought you were going. So good. And...
And... I know you have these whole grain baguette half baguettes. Some of them have sweetness in the middle, don't they?
Oh, we have the white one on the gray baguette.
Yeah, small carpet.
In one bag, a multi-grain, a fat berry and an apple plate. And in another bag, two plate ones.
That's what they can study. They could take... The white can use...
In this one.
Take like this.
And then in another bag, um... Have...
And like that.
Okay, now it's like that. Do they push this ass?
No.
You know? It's times like that.
Why, maybe this is new.
But it's not, it's not supposed to be one of those.
I love that.
Yeah, but you have to do, they need to put some, we need to get to the right place with some. But I think it's... Whatever.
Well, you know, it's, they have a new version now, which is linked up to the internet. We do talk to other people.
But I'm sitting doing my work, you know, because I'm so, I'm so, I'm sitting on a bench. I mean, I was on the front of the major's car and it's going. That's right, French. Yeah, I was in love. And when I go here, I don't think so. Doesn't happen. Um, I'm sorry. Or that. I know. That was there. And I said, hello, I don't think so. It's beautiful. I think it's one of those. So.
And. Uh, I know you have these whole grain baguette, half baguettes. Some of them have sweetest in the world, you know, or.
Um, we have the, so we have all the great, great.
Oh yeah, you can have a small carpet.
It is one bed, a multi-grain, a fabric and a plate on it. And then another bed, two plates on it.
That's what they can study to take. The white.
These are the industry.
That's one bed. And then you have a bed, um, have. And like without a grain. Okay. That is what I would want to do. You can push the dash. Oh, it's much better. Why, maybe this is new.
I do. Yeah, but you, you have to, you need to put some, you need to get some. Put in there.
Well, you know, it's, uh, they have a new improved version now, which, uh, is linked up to the internet. We do talk about it.
But I'm sitting doing my work, you know, because I'm so, I'm so, I'm sitting on a bench. I mean, I was on the front of the major's car and it's going. That's right, French. Yeah, I was in love. And when I go here, I don't think so. Um, I'm sorry. That was there. And I said, hello, I don't think so. It's beautiful.
And. Uh, I know you have these whole grain baguette, half baguettes. Some of them have sweetest in the world, you know, or.
Um, we have the, so we have all the great, great.
Oh yeah, you can have a small carpet.
It is one bed, a multi-grain, a fabric and a plate on it. And then another bed, two plates on it.
That's what they can study to take. The white.
These are the industry.
That's one bed. And then you have a bed, um, have. And like without a grain. Okay. That is what I would want to do. You can push the dash. Oh, it's much better. Why, maybe this is new.
Summer. I do. It's not, it's, it's not. It's supposed to be one of those.
I love that.
Yeah, but you, you have to, you need to put some, you need to get some. Put in there.
Well, you know, it's, uh, they have a new improved version now, which, uh, is linked up to the internet. We do talk about it.
But I'm sitting doing my work, you know, because I'm so, I'm so, I'm sitting on a bench. I mean, I was on the front of the major's car and it's going. That's right, French. Yeah, I was in love. And when I go here, I don't think so. Um, I'm sorry.